State of Oregon and here in May for the House Committee on Behavioral Health and Healthcare. Let me sort of do some agenda management so everybody knows what's going on. And then we're going to proceed to two very important bills. They might happen to be the chairs. And then we will also have a work session this evening. So first up, we are carrying over to tomorrow, March 29th, House Bill 2538, House Bill 2539, House Bill 3126. If you are here for those bills, please come back tomorrow. We'll try again. We await paperwork and amendments. If you are here for House Bill 2445 or House Bill 25 -- excuse me, I goof that up every time. If you're here for House Bill 2445 or 2455, we are carrying those over to Monday, April 3rd. So we will definitely -- colleagues, if you have not seen the agenda as it sort of keeps developing for Monday, you might bring sleeping bags.
[inaudible]
We're going to be very, we're going to be very busy on Monday, and we're going to be here a long time. So 2445, 2445, 2455, we're carrying over to Monday, April 3rd. 2538, 2539, House Bill 3126, we're going to try for tomorrow, carry it over to March 29th. And then committee staff has graciously agreed to like update the agendas on OLS so everything will be clear and easy. And you can see, our agenda won't be so tough tomorrow, but it's going to be brutal on Monday.
Can't wait.
Can't me neither. Okay, with that, committee, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing on House Bill 2697. Oh, it's a work session. That's right. I'm going to open a work session on House Bill 2697. I'm going to head down to the dais. I'm going to be assisted by four different people and--
He's got me so excited for Monday, I think I should go. Just kidding.
I'd like to call up with me, this is invited testimony, Paige Spence, Megan Boerslautmaker, I believe Andy Easton is also coming up, and Matt Swanson.
Come on up, come on up.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and get us started, Mr. Vice Chair. Okay. Colleagues, for the record, my name is Rob Noos. I am the state representative for House District 42, and I'm presenting on House Bill 2697, the amendment that unfortunately we do not have yet on OLS. This is a conceptual amendment, but I felt like since this bill is very big and very important, I wanted to at least walk you through this so when you see the amendment finally posted, you would at least have some sense of the work that's been done by these four and a bunch of other folks actually that they're going to walk you through that. I ask that you also sort of indulge me, if they stray over into a few other bills that are connected to House Bill 2697, that you not get too bent out of shape about that, and you allow them to just bring those, mention those bills in this work session. So with that, colleagues, you know, we have all heard a lot this session about hospital staffing and our healthcare workforce. The Oregon Nurses Association, the Service Employees International Union Local 49, the Oregon Federation of Nurses and Health Professionals, and the Oregon Association of Hospitals and Health Systems have come together and agreed on a package, and they're going to help me present that this evening. That legislation supports hospital staff. It builds a pipeline of healthcare workers. It addresses hospital capacity and discharging challenges, and improves the state's cost growth target to support investment in frontline caregivers across the system. I am very proud, and I'm not exaggerating about this, of the advocates that are here with me who worked diligently together for months to find solutions to a very tough problem and come land on something that we believe is going to work for all of the parties. The stakeholders are going to walk you through the exact changes that are going to be in the amendments that will be posted. I'm here to just provide a rough overview and sort of kick them off. With House Bill 2697, it will give healthcare workers a stronger voice in the creation of their staffing plans, and in certain hospital units, establish statutory nurse-to-patient ratios to help prevent nurse burnout and improve patient care. Oregon will be the first in the nation with a ratio for certified nursing assistants as well. This legislation also reduces many of the administrative burdens hospitals currently struggle with, and hopefully builds partnership that I hope and we hope will help ensure access to care for patients in the future. We are also building workforce pipeline stuff into this bill as well. We're working to increase new clinical training opportunities for a variety of healthcare professions, and incentivize nurses to come back to work at the bedside, as well as to work as faculty in our nursing schools. These investments will not only support hospitals, but they will also support other providers along the continuum of care in our state. So nursing homes, skilled nursing facilities, okay? We'll be using the vehicle, I believe, of Senate Bill 1079 to help us develop some solutions to address hospital capacity and acute post-care. And the Senate, I believe, has an amendment. They're working on that, but they're going to preview that bill for us as well. Frankly, they had a better relating to clause than we did, colleagues, and that's why we're using a Senate bill. I think on any given day, hundreds of people are cared for in hospitals in our state while they wait to be discharged to more appropriate care settings due to discharge barriers that include a lack of availability and care settings that meet their needs. Senate Bill 1079 will create a task force, staffed by the governor's office, and should this pass, maybe some of you will consider being on it, to make policy and funding recommendations for 2024 that will address discharge barriers and enhance the post-acute care continuum in a patient-centered way. The amendment is in the works, and the language will be available when the bill makes it to our committee. House Bill 2742, this is about the cost curve, okay, the program that OHA runs to try to give us a better handle on what is driving healthcare costs. Since the cost growth target was created in 2018, the COVID-19 pandemic and its unforeseen consequences have highlighted the fragility of our delivery system, frankly, the volatility of our economy, and the steps necessary to ensure access to care for patients. House Bill 2742 makes changes to the state's cost growth target to exempt healthcare workforce costs for frontline caregivers, allowing hospitals and other healthcare providers to invest in their staff without fear of facing penalties from the state. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to these four folks. I think they've prepared sort of a presentation, and I would just ask Mr. Vice Chair that you sort of watch for questions, and then as they come up, we'll let our committee pepper these folks here with what they have on their minds.
Thank you, Chair Noos. I'm very appreciative of the overview. I know that a lot of our healthcare workers are very excited about this bill, and thank you for your hard work. Mr. Swanson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Noos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee. My name is Matt Swanson. I'm here representing the Service Employees International Union Local 49, and the thousands of frontline caregivers and hospital workers that will be impacted by House Bill 2697. So I'm happy to help introduce what is a consensus amendment concept to this House Bill 2649. The amendments are, as Chair Noos said, the results of months of work between interested parties at the urging of the chair, and I think many members of the committee, to find a solution and a compromise around a really difficult topic. We appreciate the hard work and insight, dedication of my fellow stakeholders in this work, and I think that really helped us reach an agreement that we can be proud of. And I also appreciate your willingness to listen to the voices of workers and caregivers who shared really tough experiences with you to help highlight the need for a change in the law like this. So for the thousands of professional, technical, and service workers who are members of our union, and all those workers in Oregon hospitals, we are excited for this opportunity. With the passage of House Bill 2697, all workers on the care team will have a clear and resounding voice in hospital staffing. New committees for professional and technical workers like respiratory therapists or imaging techs, and service workers like dietary, environmental service workers, and nursing assistants, and many others, will now have a voice in safe patient care. I'm going to cover two components of the conceptual amendment, so new staffing committees and some of the enforcement provisions, while my other colleagues will cover other aspects of the law. So to start, we have an agreement around a hospital-wide allied healthcare worker-staffing committee structure. It establishes wall-to-wall staff planning by creating staffing committees for allied healthcare workers, including service, technical, and professional workers. So professional workers and technical staff will have a combined committee. That helps with some of the streamlining of the law compared to the introduced bill. And service staff will have its own committee as well to create a staffing plan. It permits committees to meet jointly, to come by a mutual agreement to help streamline the process and facilities where that makes sense. It provides workers with the ability to adopt staffing plans based on a clear and comprehensive criteria, while leaving some discretion to hospital administration to create a hospital-wide plan by combining those committees, so we don't have silos working against each other. And then it also requires that plans would be submitted to the Oregon Health Authority so those are, can be available for enforcement and other activities. With enforcement, I think a big shift that we made in the law is to highlight that really the law is constructed as focused on surveys and audits. That's a very time and labor-intensive type of enforcement. Advocates agreed that we wanted to see this shift to more of a complaint-driven process, so it's really focused on resolving complaints of the law instead of a deep and oftentimes laborious process to survey and audit. This will also include more transparency for the parties involved having access to information throughout the process. The enhanced regulatory enforcement will be mandatory, that is a change in the law, and it will be complaint-driven, as I said, with some specified timelines around investigations, within 30 days of opening an investigation and 60 days to close, so we get resolution quickly, and provide a clear direction to the Oregon Health Authority and its role as an enforcement agency. Additionally, we created a different fee structure for violations. So for hospitals who directly have instances of missed meal and rest breaks, there would be a penalty of $200 paid to the worker, and a remedy of up to $1,000 for each missed break. The hospital would also have a penalty for failure to create or adhere to a staffing plan, and that graduates from a warning, so we don't start with a fine, and it could be up to $2,500 for the second violation, and $5,000 for a repeat violation. The hospital penalty for not releasing staff to participate in the committee would be a warning again for the first violation, and then $500 thereafter. Additionally, the, as envisioned in the introduced bill, there would be a private right of action that has been removed, really because I think all advocates had a lot of confidence that the, the new enforcement process that we've developed to resolve complaints would be sufficient for, really, I think, getting things resolved at the hospital level, which is what we all want. So we will have committees, we'll be able to create plans, live up to those plans, and should there be violations, I think that we want that resolved in the facility through true shared governance, and I think this helps develop that type of structure. So with that, I, those are some of the high-level concepts, and I can, I don't know if we want questions now, or if we should go through the other components--
Can we get through everybody on the, on the panel and then ask questions? But I see your hand up, Morgan, so I'll--
I see that hand. All right, good.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson, Ms. Spence.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Noos, Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, and committee members. Great to see you all again. For the record, Paige Spence, Director of Government Relations for the Oregon Nurses Association. On behalf of the nurses and allied healthcare workers we represent, we are delighted to share with you the amendments that are forthcoming. So I will be speaking to the nurse staffing components of the expected amendments, which in the bill as drafted are sections five through eight. So starting with section five. Section five is a key component of the amended bill and where I will be spending most of my time in this presentation. For sections six, seven, and eight, I will promise to be much briefer. Section five is where we are including the establishment of the maximum registered nurse-to-patient ratios in state statute for many hospital settings. The ratios must be adhered to, including when a nurse takes their meal and rest break, meaning that nurses will no longer be required to double their patient assignment in order to provide break coverage. I want to note that throughout the ratio section, there is flexibility built in for all hospitals, and particularly for rural hospitals, and my colleague Megan will speak about some of that. The flexibility that I want to speak to now is the empowerment of the nurse staffing committee at all hospitals across the state. And as a reminder, the nurse staffing committees are comprised of an equal number of nurse managers and direct care nurses. So with approval of the nurse staffing committee, a hospital unit can alter the statutory nurse-to-patient ratio with the addition of up to 50% of other clinical staff. That includes licensed practical nurses and certified nursing assistants, and that is done if in pursuit of a particular innovative care model. And that would be a model that the staffing committee is considering, that would require or be best served by having a different ratio than what's in statute. And so the committee can adopt that innovative care model and accompanying variation in the staffing levels on an every-two-year basis. And so before I list out the statutory ratios, as a reminder, they are the maximum, and so the nurse staffing committees may still adopt staffing plans with, per agreement of both sides, with a lower patient assignment per nurse. So for the following units, what the law will say is that a nurse shall not be assigned to more than the following number of patients. So I will go through what those numbers are. So for, we have one nurse to one patient for trauma patients in the emergency department during active labor and delivery and in operating rooms. We have one nurse to two patients in intensive care units, labor and delivery units where the patient is not in active labor, and in post-anesthesia care units. One nurse to three patients in intermediate care units. One nurse to four patients for oncology and cardiac telemetry. And then in emergency departments for non-trauma patients, the ratio will also be one nurse to four patients, that we accommodated the need for flexibility in this dynamic environment by allowing the standard to be averaged over the shift and limiting that a nurse can never have more than five patients at one time. The maximum ratio in medical-surgical units will also be one nurse to four patients beginning June 2026, and until then, to give hospitals some time to staff up, it will be one to five. Postpartum is the last one that is in statute. That will include one nurse to eight patients, which includes the newborns in that count. And then there will be cases where the nurse staffing committee sets the ratio without having based their decision-making on a presumptive statutory ratio. So for example, nurse-to-patient ratios will not be set in statute by this bill for psychiatric units. This is a topic of much debate because of the sort of wider range of folks that tend to be part of a care team for patients in those settings. So there will be a multidisciplinary subcommittee of the psychiatric unit staff that will determine the staffing levels and staffing plan for that unit, ultimately approved by the nurse staffing committee. The ratios for other units and circumstances not otherwise listed here, including patients who are very critically ill, or who are ready for discharge but face a discharge barrier, as well as outpatient units under a hospital's license, these are left to the nurse staffing committees to determine, so these are not in statute, and we have set forth specific criteria for them to base their decision-making on at the committee level. Finally, there are also safe patient assignment limits for charged nurses and certified nursing assistants. Charged nurses may take patient assignments, including covering breaks, only in units with 10 or fewer beds, and would be counted in the ratios when they have a patient assignment. Certified nursing assistants may be assigned up to seven patients on a day shift and 11 patients on a night shift. And so for section five, I really just want to applaud and thank the whole stakeholder table for reaching agreement on this important component, because this will be Oregon having the first state in the nation to have statutory ratios in place, both for nurses and CNAs. There are a couple of other states that have some ratios for nurses, but those are in rule, not statute, so Oregon can really, once again, be a leader in the healthcare sector. Section six, section six pertains to dispute resolution in the event that direct care and management staff are not able to reach an agreement at the staffing committee. And so there are two separate paths, one that is applicable if there is a statutory ratio, and one that applies for units where the nurse-to-patient ratio is determined at the staffing committee level. So if there is a statutory ratio, as I stated earlier, the hospital must comply with that ratio unless the staffing committee agrees to a different one pursuant to an innovative care model. And if there is no agreement on the committee, the hospital simply just complies with that statutory ratio. And then when there is no statutory ratio for some units and circumstances, if the committee is unable to reach an agreement after a certain amount of deliberation, then the co-chairs will submit those disputed versions of the staffing plan drafts to the Oregon Health Authority, and the Oregon Health Authority will then set forth a process to initiate expedited binding arbitration. This will be time-limited and binding, whereas current legislation says mediation and impasse, which often leads to a long period of time with no resolution. The arbitrator's decision, again, is binding and must be based on the nurse staffing plans submitted by the chairpersons. Section seven pertains to the criteria that the nurse staffing committee can consider when creating staffing plans. It also provides that the nurse staffing plan include a formal process for evaluating and initiating limitations on admission or diversion of patients to another hospital when, in the judgment of a direct care nurse or a nurse manager, that there is a risk of harm to patients or an inability to meet patient care needs. So again, some flexibility built in there. And finally, section seven provides that hospitals submit to, sorry, excuse me, submit the nurse staffing plan and any subsequent revisions to the plan made under section eight of the amended bill within 30 days of the staffing committee's approval. With that, I will turn it over to my good colleague Megan, and I know we are all glad to take questions at the end of this presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Spence. Megan, go ahead.
Thank you. Chair Noos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee, I am Megan Boerslautmaker, Executive Vice President and General Counsel for the Oregon Association of Hospitals and Health Systems. On behalf of our members, we're grateful for the collective effort that has led to this agreement on House Bill 2697 and the package of legislation that Andy will share with you. The expected amendment to House Bill 2697 will support hard-working, frontline staff in hospitals, and reduce many of the administrative burdens that hospitals currently face, and importantly, protect access to care for our communities. House Bill 2697 presented an opportunity to improve what wasn't working well in the current nurse staffing law, and we collectively took that opportunity. For example, as, as Matt shared earlier, we'll shift away from the audit and survey model to a compliant, a complaint-based process. We hope this new process will improve the experience of staff and provide hospitals with timely notice of concern so that when necessary, they can make swift adjustments. Staffing a hospital is a complex task, and hospitals are dynamic environments. The amendment will include provisions that recognize these realities. For example, hospitals will have an opportunity to show they took reasonable efforts related to violations before civil penalties are imposed. We work to, we work to ensure that local decision-making for our rural hospitals could be preserved. The amendment will include a variance process that will be available to type A and type B hospitals. We also work to facilitate quality patient care and ensure the voices of staff will be heard and that standards will be fair and reasonable. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'll be happy to answer questions when we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder to the committee members, continue to hold your questions, and we'll wait for Ms. Easton to give her testimony, and then we'll, we'll start peppering the panelists.
Great. Chair Noos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and members of the committee, I'm Andy Easton, here on behalf of Oregon Association of Hospitals and Health Systems, and proud to be here with my colleagues to talk about 2697, but also to share with you a package of bills that go with 2697. And through this process, we will be working with you to ensure that they come to fruition. As my colleagues have shared, the association supports this carefully crafted compromise package of bills, which does include a consensus amendment to 2697 that my colleagues have already walked you through. I'm going to walk you through the remaining key pieces of our agreement that complete the package. First is to build the workforce. How do we build that pipeline of healthcare workforce that we seek to, we're going to seek investments in, nearly $40 million of investments into our healthcare workforce? This will support nurse faculty and clinical placement opportunities for nurses and other healthcare workers. These investments will increase the number of nurses who can attend accredited nursing programs in Oregon, and support necessary clinical placements are available to them as well as to other healthcare workers. The clinical placements may be in hospitals, long-term care, residential care, or federally qualified health centers. The vehicle for this nurse faculty will be House Bill 3324, and we will collectively advocate for clinical placements in the budget. Second, we have agreed that the hospitals and other healthcare providers should be able to invest in their staff and not face any penalties if they exceed that cost-growth target. That is a vehicle that we will be amending, is House Bill 2742, to meet that. Finally, we have with this committee, in the past, hundreds of people are cared for in our hospitals in Oregon while they await for discharge, to a more appropriate care settings due to discharge barriers that include lack of availability in a variety of healthcare settings that would better meet their needs. There is an agreement, as Representative Noos alluded to, and establish a task force to make policy and funding recommendations to the 2024 legislature that will address discharge barriers and enhance the post-acute care continuum in a patient-centered way. The vehicle for that concept will be placed within Senate Bill 710, excuse me, 1079, in Senate Healthcare, but we wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to hear about it first in this committee. It is important that all these pieces move forward together as a package. They are all interconnected and interdependent upon each other. The overall success of these collective package depends on all these moving pieces moving through the completion of this session. And with that, Chair Noos and Vice Chairs, I think we are open for questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Easton. Committee, who's got questions? Representative Conrad?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate it. So--
Whoa, 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 hold on. Morgan's going to go first.
Oh. You called him first, it's fine.
You raised your hand like two hours ago.
I know, but no, you called his name--
Okay, all right. Representative Conrad, go ahead and ask your question.
Age before beauty, no, just kidding.
Ms. Spence, I think this is probably primarily going to be you, but the ratios themselves, I'm interested in knowing how they're going to be calculated. At one point in time, you mentioned per shift, so if you can elaborate on the on-the-ground calculations for how that's going to be looked at, specifically, an example, if the ratio is one to four, but yet for whatever reason, a nurse has to, can only take care of three, for whatever reason, can the other one take care of five, because averaging out, it's still one to four? Or is a third nurse going to have to call in because that second nurse cannot exceed four patients whatsoever? So if you can get specific on some of that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Chair Noos, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and Representative Conrad. So the averaging only applies to the emergency department itself, and that is per shift, not per nurse, right? So the way that it would be calculated, since this is a complaint-driven process, you know, the nurses would have to say, kind of talk amongst themselves and say, hey, did you have, you know, a higher than an average of four patients per shift? And if the collective answer seems to be yes, then perhaps there would be a complaint and an investigation warranted. So the averaging would be, you would not have to have a third nurse step in, if that helps answer your question. So in the emergency department, if the, if the default ratio is one to four, and you and I are on the same ship together, I may only have three patients at a time because of their acuity, and you at that time could be allowed to have five, so that it, as averaged across the, the unit, right, not per nurse. So I hope that answers your question. That is the only unit where the ratio applies, or excuse me, where the averaging applies. And in terms of how it's calculated, my colleagues at the Hospital Association may have more to add.
Sure. What I can add, I think Paige did a great description of how the emergency department will work. There will be a cap to and not to exceed of five patients per nurse in the emergency department. In the other units where there's a statutory nurse-to-patient ratio, and I apologize, was I-- Okay. In the other units, if the, if the ratio is one to four, for example, then a nurse could not take five patients. A nurse could only take four patients even if her colleague had only taken three. There's no averaging that will occur in the units outside of the emergency department. So it really is, is a cap. There will be a provision in the law for limited deviations from the ratios that will be allowed, so there'll be, a limited number will be allowed for a limited number of time, because sometimes it's the right thing to do to take in that extra patient if, you know, if the unit has the capability-- know, if the unit has the capability and capacity to do it, but it would mean exceeding the ratio for some short period of time. So we expect to see that to allow just a little bit of flex in the law to really meet what we think is a dynamic environment and create an opportunity for the right thing to be done, if it's the right thing for patient access to care and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Morgan, I understand you have a question or two or three or four.
You are so kind. Thank you, Vice Chair. My first question would be, was there any exemption or workout around some of the concerns we heard from the smaller hospitals, the rural frontier? I might have missed that, and I'm visual, so without having it in front of me, I apologize if I missed that part.
So I'll take a run at it. I think the, what the allowance is, is there is a requirement that OHA would grant variances when by mutual agreement, the hospital, so the local decision-makers, the committees, the administrators are able to work together and decide that that would be needed for the type A and B hospital. So I think that allows us to develop a vision that respects some of those local decision-makers, which is where I think we want the decision-making to be when a variance would be possible around the ratios, and that is the key point there.
Fabulous.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that real quick, Chair, Vice Chairs, and Rep. Morgan, the, we heard in another bill from small hospital leadership that OHA variances or waivers take a very long time to be issued. So what we've done here is particular to the nurse staffing ratios. As Matt said, if the nurse staffing committee so agrees, then OHA shall grant that variance on a two-year basis, and we've put sideboards in there of 60 days within which OHA can respond to grant that variance.
The second question, Vice Chair.
Follow up?
Different one.
Different question, go ahead.
I gave him four warning, I had three. My second unrelated question. An emergency department, if you have a situation of a mass casualty incident, is that one of those things that a variance could apply if, in a circumstance, all hell broke loose?
Chair Noes, Vice Chairs, and Representative Morgan, yes. So what we did, and this is the flexibility provision that Megan was alluding to just a moment ago, that not just for the emergency department, but in any unit, including the emergency department, there can be a deviation from the staffing plan for up to six instances in a 30-day period before it amounts to a violation, and those instances can last up to 12 hours each time. So whether it's a car accident or a larger mass casualty event, and that we would not want to have patients in dire need of care be turned away, we're looking at, we would have that contemplated in the amendment, yes, that there would be able to be an up to 12-hour, up to six times per unit within 30 days deviation from the staffing plan, including the ratios.
This work's incredible. I really appreciate all y'all's effort. I have one final question that the Vice Chair let me ask. I was a bad employee in that I would be told to take a break, and I wouldn't because there's a need and you want to get the work done. But I heard mentioned that there's a payout to an employee for violation and not getting breaks or lunches. What if it's not on the hospital that they're not taking it because they have a circumstance? You know nurses, they don't stop working. I mean.
Yes. Chair Noes, Vice Chairs, Rep. Morgan, happy to answer that question as well, and my colleagues can chime in. So like Matt said, the way that enforcement has been working is that it has been sort of this periodic surveys and audits. There are complaints that are available, but the Oregon Health Authority often does not have the capacity to get to those complaints. So by getting rid of the surveys and audits, what we've also done is reemphasize that this is a complaint-driven process. So in an example where I'm a bad actor and I say I didn't get my break because I just want that $200, it's not automatic that when I clock out, it says, did you get your break? And I say, no, and then they would issue $200. There are bully standards in place that go into evaluating whether a missed break has been missed. For example, like one minute of a missed break does not count as a violation of wage-and-hour law. And so there's two routes that this can take. One is that the Oregon Health Authority can make that determination using those bully standards. The other, because there's a particular statute where bully does not weigh in if there is a collective bargaining agreement for healthcare workers. So if the OHA process is what a worker can take, but if they are not covered by a CBA, they could also pursue that through bully, which would have a compensation of up to $1,000 for the worker, where the OHA process would only have 200. So since it's a complaint-driven process, that would sort of be the remedy, but before the $200 would be awarded to the worker, either depending on which track is chosen, bully or OHA would be using those clear standards already in law to make the determination that a break had been missed that warranted compensation before the payment was issued to the worker.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that last statement, Ms. Spence, who decides which track is taken?
Vice Chair Nelson, the worker can choose which track is taken. However, again, there is a statute in Oregon law that says that the bully does not get involved, particularly with healthcare workers, if there is a collective bargaining agreement in place. So therefore, we just kind of copy-pasted the bully standards over to a process that OHA can use to evaluate whether there has been a missed break using those same standards. However, by mutual agreement of the parties involved in negotiating this bill, we agreed to cap that or set that compensation amount at $200. So if, for whatever reason, the worker was not covered by a CBA and wanted to try the bully process, that remedy is available at up to $1,000. We will have to sort of see how implementation works. I know that bully is probably less staffed to do this kind of enforcement investigation than OHA, so we would assume that most folks would choose the OHA route, but I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you. Representative Bobin?
My question was addressed, thanks.
All right, that's always nice. Representative Deal, I'll put Representative Javady, and Representative Goodwin in the queue.
All right. Thank you, co-chair. I just want to clarify, I think I understand this, but there's no reporting of staffing. It is entirely complaint-driven. It's not like the hospitals are issuing reports on a monthly basis about staffing, and fines come in the mail.
That is correct.
It's based on reports. Thank you.
Correct.
Is that it, Rep. Deal?
For now.
So disappointed.
All right.
Rep. Javady?
This is a hypothetical. Thank you, Vice Chair. Suppose it's a hospital setting, we have an employee that needs to be let go. Maybe they're chronically late, maybe there's a patient care issue, but by letting that employee go, we're going to be out of, we'll be outside the ratios that we need to maintain. So I get that it's complaint-driven, but is there wiggle room there to address issues where the hospital has to choose between being fully staffed or managing their staff?
So I think, Chair Noes, Vice Chairs, Nelson, Goodwin, Representative Javady, I think that is why we built in some flexibility around when you can be out of compliance. However, we wanted to make sure that there was a cap, right? Because there's a difference between some different scenarios here and there and consistently missing the mark, because we think that a hospital is a dynamic environment. We recognize that in crafting the amendment, and we do want to achieve safer staffing levels. So I think we tried to strike a balance that does, I think, get at some of the scenarios, and we could come up with many. We thought it was easier to perhaps think about some of those variances or allowances, I think, of the way we crafted it than trying to spell that all out in the law, because we don't know always all the reasons why. But I think that was the balance we tried to strike and come to an agreement around. So I hope that answers what you're looking for.
Very flexible.
Mr. Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Representative Javady, just about all hospitals also have per diem staff, on-call staff. Sometimes they call them floaters. So if there's a nurse that they had to let go for a performance reason, there's often somebody that they can get to plug in until they've been able to hire somebody.
Thank you. Rep. Goodwin?
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. So I do appreciate the effort that labor in hospital has put into this effort to find some variance in there. I still think there needs to be a lot more flexibility. I'm very concerned about the med-surg units, those very large units, and how inflexible that is. We clearly have a severe nursing shortage, so there is not an abundance of nurses out there. I'd like to know, it appears in previous testimony, that there's just such a certainty that these ratios will magically, well, these ratios will bring nurses back. They will just come back in droves. Is there data? Is there evidence of that? Anything that you could speak to about our severe workforce shortage and how these ratios, still quite rigid, will really help that situation?
Sure. Chair Noes, Vice Chair Goodwin, Vice Chair Nelson, yeah, so three things I would say. One is that, of course, there is not data that can forecast how many nurses will come back to the bedside, right? That's future casting, so there's not data to predict the future. But what we do know is that understaffing is the number-one reason that nurses are leaving the bedside. So we have to assume that by the opposite of that logic, that nurses will stay at the bedside, so this is a retention law, by improving staffing levels and making hospitals a place where nurses feel safe to work and want to work. And as you heard in testimony, there are nurses who you heard from firsthand their experience that they are waiting for this bill to pass and will come back. So we have to rely on the voices of those nurses who say they'll come back, to know that they'll come back. The second thing I would say is that we have delayed implementation here for the purposes of bringing forward the workforce development pieces that Ms. Easton spoke to, and we don't, none of us actually covered that in our presentation, so that's probably worth mentioning. When this law, should this law be passed, it goes into effect September 1 of this year for the purposes of OHA to begin rulemaking. However, the ratios do not go into effect until June 1, 2024. The new committees go online at the end of 2024, and then the civil penalties don't start accruing with the mandatory enforcement until June 1, 2025. So hospitals have a good opportunity to staff up before enforcement would be the reality, and we, I'm sure, will be presenting to your committee in the short session about how this is going. The third thing I would say is that Oregon actually has more nurses per capita than California, who also has these ratios. So we have a distribution problem, much more than a workforce problem, and we do hope that some of the workforce development pieces will address that as well.
So just a quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
I've spoken to many nurses in my district, and there were other reasons. Severe COVID mandate restrictions was a big reason. Many nurses were just at that age, and like, you know what? This is so strange right now with this COVID emergency. I'm going to do something else. Went to clinics, or they chose other paths than the hospital setting. So I'm just not as certain as you are that that's going to open a floodgate of return, but I'm certainly wishing that that is true. I do really appreciate, though, that in the hospitals that do have a nurse staffing congeniality, have a real cooperation, and look at models of innovation and work as teams together, and they can really agree on what is best for patients first, and they can agree, and they can work with administration, they can really create the best culture in that hospital for patient care, and of course, to keep their nurses happy, we want our nurses to be happy. But I'm happy to see that if, and I'm just qualifying, is this true that if they come to an agreement with administration, that is left, that is the agreement that is honored? There is no other complaints that pile on to that? If those staffing committees?
So I believe, Chair, Chair Noes, Representative Vice Chairs Nelson and Goodwin, yes, that is the intent, as I understand it, you're talking about the hospital staffing plan, is that the ratios in the statute will have requirements that they have to live up to that are not foreign to the nurse staffing law. But yes, the goal with this is that, and I think what our members expect is, we're going to be able to reach an agreement we can all be proud of that meets the needs of our patients with our community and with our facility, and that's what, if we have a complaint, it's about the thing we all agreed to. And that's what our members really want. They don't need a bunch of surveys, they just want to know on paper, this is what we planned and agreed to staff to together, and that's what we would have a complaint against is if there was a change in that, or if they staffed out of compliance with the thing we all agreed to. So I think that's, I hope that answers the question you were asking, but that's really the goals. We wanted to be able to just say, this is what we agreed to for our hospital, and that's labor management choice.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I would just want to add that we do have more nurses in this state now than we did pre-pandemic, and I personally think this will make it much easier for hospitals in our state to poach nurses from other states, but we'll see. Representative Conrad?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate it. Following up Vice Chair Goodwin's question, my question's about the outcomes. When we heard the initial public hearing in addition to the staffing and the supposed nurses that are going to be flocking back into these positions, we heard patient safety, we heard workplace conditions. How are those going to be monitored so that we know if this, all the time and effort that you guys have put into it are actually successful? When are we going to be seeing that, and how is that going to be measured over time? At the hospital level, at the OHA level? Are we going to be asking some other third party to actually be an independent auditor and look at all this kind of stuff? Can you talk to the outcomes, and how are we going to know that this is successful or not?
Vice Chair Noes, Vice, excuse me, Chair Noes, didn't mean to demote you, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, Representative Conrad, you know, I think that there will be a few different factors. Certainly, the Oregon State Board of Nursing can and does regularly do surveys of the licensed nurses in the state. The Oregon Center for Nursing, who is a nonpartisan nonprofit, tends to do the same. So we know that there will be a state board and a nonprofit research group who will be doing, asking exactly the questions that you're asking. Additionally, I would be really surprised if this group did not come speak to you all again as the bill goes online, because again, the ratios and the new committees don't take effect until 2024, so I think you'll be looking at the 2025 session where our groups will certainly be coming back to speak with your committee about the outcomes that this bill has brought, as well as the outcomes from the workforce packages. Yeah.
Chair Noes, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and Representative Conrad, the other group that will be watching this very carefully is the Oregon Nursing Board, Nurse Staffing Advisory Board, which is already in statute under OHA. They already monitor the staffing plans for hospitals, and they will have some potentially newfound time going over complaints versus going through investigation information. So they will be another group that will be watching this carefully.
And just one final thought, I think, Chair Noes, Vice Chair Nelson, and Vice Chair Goodwin, Representative Conrad, I think for the full care team, it's also about, you know, fulfilling the mission that they went into the work with. I think we heard a CNA talk about how, you know, they left a career in business because they, the care they received after a car accident. You know, for many who do that job, they're going to nursing homes, perhaps higher pay, lower patient loads. We want to see that our healthcare, our hospitals are becoming that employer of choice again. So I think some of this is also going to be seen by the rest of the care team, I think, implementing them as a voice in staffing, making these good jobs, jobs that, you know, I think, what do you think of an environmental services worker? And if they have a choice about where to work, we want it to be cleaning a hospital, turning over a room, making sure that our patients aren't getting infections because they don't have enough staff to do the job that they do in the facility. So I think that's, that's the other piece of this, is really, you know, getting down to, I think, the full care team and how hospitals should be an employer of choice in many of our communities. I mean, they're some of the largest employers, and rural areas, I think we want them to be able to get the best and the brightest and be a good job for folks, and I think that's, this law helps provide some structure to that conversation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Representative Deal?
Thank you, co-chair. So this whole thing is being driven by the idea that nurses are going to come back. Is that fair? What's your best, give me an estimate.
Asked and answered.
No, how many?
Yeah, Representative.
Well, we went to a lot of work. You must have some idea. I mean, is it two or?
So Chair Noes, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, and Representative Deal, what we do know is the turnover rate here in Oregon, and what we do know is that the number-one reason that nurses report, not just to ONA, but to the nonpartisan groups, that they are leaving the bedside is staffing. So what we will have to do in the future, I can't forecast a number, what we will do in the future is compare the current turnover rates statewide and in particular hospitals with the turnover rates that happen once this law has been implemented.
Can I ask a follow-up on that, too?
Go ahead, Representative.
Thank you. If, if we don't, it'd be unfortunate if no nurses do come back, or we don't see this change. What will be the result of this law? Will anything be better if the nurse level stays the same?
Representative, excuse me, Chair Noes, Vice Chairs, Rep. Deal, so I want to be clear that ONA has not stated that our top goal here is to bring nurses back. This is a nurse retention bill to keep the nurses who are at the bedside. We are hemorrhaging nurses out the back door of a hospital far faster than we can bring them in. So all of the workforce development, all of the workforce pipeline dollars in the world are not having nurses stay. Nurses are being hired, and then nurses are being lost out the back door at a far faster.[1800.83] Nurses are being hired and then nurses are being lost out the back door at a far faster rate. So our goal here, our top goal, has been nurse retention. We do also know from the nurses that you also heard from in the hearing that some nurses do plan to come back. So yes, we do believe that this bill will improve not only nurse retention, but you know, we hear from nurses who move to Oregon because Oregon has better workplace conditions, because Oregon has a nurse staffing law. So we do believe that we will not only have Oregon nurses coming back to the bedside, but also will be attracting nurses from other states due to this law.
Representative Javady?
Thank you, two questions. As you develop the ratios of 1 to 1 and 1 to 5 in those different scenarios, what data did you rely on to come up with those ratios? And I guess more specifically, along with that, was the idea, what was good for the patient? Like, we had evidence that 1 to 5 would result in, at that, 1 to 6, we're going to start seeing a decrease in quality of patient care? Or was the concern, we started to see increased burnout with our nurses, or both?
Sure, Chair Noes, I'm not going to get it right, Chair Noes, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, Representative Javady. So I think two things. One, you asked the question of what data we relied on. So for some of the statutory ratios, including labor and delivery, there are national professional associations that do have those standards in place. And so our group has discussed and pointed to which ratios have those best practices. There are not best practices for all of them. So what we drew on was the experience of frontline workers. What we drew on was also the federal legislation, which was actually just reintroduced this week in Congress that has ratios that are actually more stringent than the Oregon law. And we also looked, of course, at the California law and how that has implemented and worked. So for example, your med surgical question about 1 to 5 versus 1 to 6. There is not good data that shows patient outcomes for 1 to 6 versus 1 to 5. However, there is excellent data that adding one more nurse per shift reduces patient mortality, reduces hospital rates of readmission, reduces rates of infection. So we can look at what adding a nurse does to sort of quantify the outcomes of nurses spending more time with their patients, right? Preventing delayed care, delayed relating to call waits, having patients need to be clean, need to use the restroom, need medication, right? We know that these delays all happen when there's understaffing. I hope that answers your question.
The second question.
I don't know that I'm giving you another question. No, go ahead, Rep. Javady.
Thank you. I appreciate that charity and grace, all right. The second question goes to patient, what's in the best interest of patients? And I agree that healthy, happy nurses are going to hopefully mean healthy, happy patients. Our baby boomer population is aged 59 to 77. They're going to get older, they're going to need more health care. I think part of what my guess would be for nurses that contributes to burnout is not being able to provide the kind of care that they need to for the patients. And as they feel like more and more patients are getting turned away, I could see possibly that burnout, that contributing to burnout. My question is, as we see this aging population get older and need more, if, how will we address that with nurse staffing ratios? Especially where maybe our supply of nurses doesn't catch up? Because it's not, what, is there flexibility within the rulemaking process to modify those ratios or to help expand to meet those needs? Or we need to go through a statutory process again to address that?
Great question. So Chair Noes, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson and committee members, yes. So in pursuit of an innovative care model that is designed to be, provide that flexibility for in the future, because nothing is static. The nurse staffing committee, per the law, can agree to a ratio that is higher than what's in statute. And that can contain nurses as well as nursing staff, which means your certified nursing assistants and your licensed, licensed practical nurses? I tend to screw that one up. So yes, in the future, should there be a different care model that was required for a certain population of patients, perhaps the aging patients? The law does provide for that flexibility.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to wrap up, but I'm going to ask a couple of questions before we close out. And they're kind of related. So will CEOs still be able to reject staffing committee plans? If you could go into that process a little bit, I would appreciate it. And also, one of the things I've heard in the past is that nurses don't participate in these committees because they fear, they have fears around retaliation, and there's oftentimes harassment and intimidation. So can you address anything that's been done in the bill to address those type of concerns from nurses and healthcare workers?
Sure, thank you for that question. Chair Noes, Vice Chairs Goodwin and Nelson, so you may have to remind me of the second question. So to the first, I think I've got them. So to the first question around.
CEO rejection.
Yeah, CEO rejection. So there's two different tracks actually in the bill. And this is in part because the nurse staffing law has been around for a long time. The nurse staffing committees currently already meet. So there's some sort of expectations that have been set, both in the hospital and at the agency setting, around adoption of the nurse staffing plan. So for the nurse staffing committees, that staffing plan adopted by the committee is the plan. Whereas for the new committees, the, you may have to correct me here, but yeah, go ahead.
So I'll take a round. And really, some of this is a different entry point into how the law, the committee law was structured. And it comes out of some experiences with New York. So CEOs will have a discretion to either take a partial plan. So they may find some disagreements, a management and labor in a certain profession doesn't have like something you can quite quantify numerically the same. So ratios, most patients will come in and need a nurse. There are other parts of the hospital where there's going to be some give and take. And I think the CEO could have some discretion to approve all of that. But if they reject a part of it, they just need to document that for the committee. So going forward, I think that is, and that's really built around what has been successful in New York is this is complicated and dynamic. So I think that discretion shouldn't be abused, and we don't want to see that. But I think the goal there is to make it operational throughout the hospital. And we're going to watch that. But I think the goal there is the flexibility to take, instead of three silos, a staffing plan that can be put together, and somebody has to do it. So I think that is the intent, is that there is some discretion there, and it has to be documented and inform the committee's work. And they're going to have a lot of work to do to set that up. So I think we're excited to have that opportunity. And I think that was an important piece to help reach an agreement around how we fit this together in a new expansive law throughout the hospital.
Thank you.
And your second question.
Second part was around shielding workers from harassment, retaliation, intimidation. Is there anything new in this bill?
Sure, Chair Noes, Vice Chairs Goodwin, Nelson, committee members. So yes, two quick things on that. One is that in terms of the staffing committee attendance, the fear on that piece so much hasn't been retaliation. It's been more that our nurses here, our nurses tell us that management does not release them from shift to attend the staffing committee. So we have added failure to release a nurse from their shift for staffing committee work to the fee schedule. That's a $500 penalty. But what's really important for us around retaliation is that we reached, I think, a really important compromise on this piece because the hospitals want timely notice that a complaint has been filed. So they can, you know, try to cure that complaint and try to keep it from happening as a repeat. But also wanting to balance that need with protecting the workers' privacy and preventing that retaliation. So what we've done here is provided that OHA will give notice that there's been an investigation filed. The staffing committee co-chairs will get that notification within a certain amount of time. And that notice will include a summary of the complaint. Go ahead and ask the hospital for certain information to respond to that complaint. But it does not provide the complainant's name or the unit or the specific date to prevent retaliation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, panelists. Mr. Chair, do you want to gavel us out and enter the next hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, audience and panel. I'm going to go ahead and close the work session on House Bill 2697. And I'm going to open a work session on House Bill 2513. Public hearing, sorry. Open a public hearing on House Bill 2513. Give me one second. Ready?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair, and tell us about everybody's favorite topic.
Here we go. Good evening, and thanks, everyone, for being here. For the record, my name is Rob Noes, and I'm the state representative for House District 42. And I want to start out with a little bit of an overview of how we got here and what we hope to achieve with the House Bill 2513, which I am nicknaming the Hope and Recovery Bill. Responding to the behavioral health and mental health crisis is a top priority for all of our voters, our governor, and all of us. We must make sure Oregonians can access the critical care and support that they are telling us they need. And there are many ways that we are going to do that this session. We're going to stand up more residential treatment facilities. We're going to stabilize our state hospitals. We're going to fund community mental health programs. And we're going to make sure that Ballot Measure 110 works. 58% of Oregonians voted in favor of Ballot Measure 110. They sent us a clear mandate that instead of punishing people for their addiction, we need to focus on expanding treatment. But it's clear that in its first years, there were issues with Ballot Measure 110's implementation. As legislators, it's our responsibility to help get this right. We owe it to Oregonians to make sure that the voters that pass Ballot Measure 110 are getting what they asked for in a more timely, transparent, and accountable manner. House Bill 2513, the Hope and Recovery Bill, keeps our state's commitment to ensuring the availability of free local services for people that are struggling with substance abuse and mental health crises. The bill takes into account the Secretary of State's audit's recommendation and also is the result of collaborative work group, I can't believe this, of over 80 providers, patients, and advocates, law enforcement, community, local government leaders, among others. Any of you want to try running a work group of 80 people, I welcome you to do it. Some changes I'd like to point out. A key issue is the lack of structure and support for the Oversight and Accountability Council. This bill will bolster staffing and improve the application process to make sure that that Oversight and Accountability Council has what they need to get people connected to recovery services. The Oregon Health Authority will now support the administrative work so that grants can get out and providers can get the funding they are supposed to have. Because the OAC is made up of people with lived experiences who have recovered from addiction or work in addiction fields, they're going to continue to be the oversight body and approve the grants. We'll take measures to speed up the approval process and make sure that we have a coordinated response between the community mental health programs, which are the local mental health authorities, or the county-run systems that are responsible for providing mental health services, and the behavioral health resource networks that this measure set up. We're going to centralize the support phone hotline with lines for life. We'll make sure that Oregonians struggling with addiction, family, friends, outreach workers, law enforcement, and more will know what to call, what number to call, when someone needs support. Accountability is an important part of making sure Oregonians are getting the support they need and on a path to recovery. To correctly assess Measure 110's progress, the next Secretary of State's audit is going to come in December of 2025, giving enough time to actually collect data and evaluate how this is going. Now, I want to emphasize that there is a lot of work to do to get this right. But we should also recognize progress has been made and what might be possible. A couple of months ago, a report was released that showed over 60,000 Oregonians had received services through Measure 110 during the early implementation part before any of the behavioral health resource networks were set up. We also know that 160 local providers have vastly expanded their behavioral health delivery capacity. These providers have purchased buildings for recovery and housing. They have bought vans to transport clients to services. They have hired new staff, expanded hours, and have provided lifesaving overdose prevention services. I'm going to go section by section through the dash one. This will be a little boring, maybe even a little tedious, but I think it's important. Section one is where we make very clear that the community mental health programs are to coordinate with the behavioral health resource networks. Each county has a behavioral health resource network and a community mental health program. And in a few instances, there are four different burns. Section two spells out very clearly, because I think there's a little bit of folklore around this measure, that this measure is to encourage treatment and recovery for people struggling with substance abuse disorder. And we defined recovery in the statute, and we are using the definition that people in this field strongly prefer. It's by SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. This is a federal government program. The definition that we're putting in is right off of their website, okay? It says, "As used in ORS 430.38 to 430.39, recovery means a process of change through which individuals improve their health and wellness, live a self-directed life, and strive to reach their full potential." This definition, colleagues, is very important because what we don't want to mandate is that recovery is only one form and one way, okay? To say it in a very stark way, I think there are some people believe that the only way that you can, quote, "be in recovery" is if you are abstinent from substances. And there are a whole slew of people that can be in recovery and can occasionally take a drink of alcohol or use a substance and not have that return them to a life of addiction where they struggle to be employed or be in relationship with their family or their children, or have other aspects of their life overcome. And I think that's very important. Section four, we take out the 4% administrative cap in terms of how this is supposed to be operated. So we have this cap in the statute that says we can only spend 4% of the money that's allocated to this program and administration. Yet meanwhile, we have had abundant criticism of the operation and the administration of this measure. I think that 4% is arbitrary. So I have suggested, along with the blessing of the work group, that we remove that. And then, as is the responsibility of the legislature in the Ways and Means process, we can see, did we spend 3% on administration? Did we spend 5% on administration? Why did we do that? What was the theory behind that? And monitor it that way, as opposed to having an arbitrary amount in the statute that I don't think is serving us one way or the other. We are going to make sure that it's clear that the Oversight and Accountability Council has oversight and sets, is oversights over the burns, and that they have a director that works for them and works through a chain of command under the Behavioral Health Director and ultimately under the Director of the Oregon Health Authority. What we want is that this unit to have a clear person that's responsible for the operation of this measure, who reports to the Oversight and Accountability Council the appropriate decisions that need to be made by that body, but then is also supported in the chain of command through the Oregon Health Authority via the Behavioral Health Director and ultimately the Director of the Oregon Health Authority. And that is how we run all the other units that are part of the OHA. We have this thing that frankly, colleagues, was making it difficult for the body to make decisions. The Oversight and Accountability Council is made up of people who are volunteering to be on this body, who have other jobs and other responsibilities, like we do with so many other boards and commissions that we run for all kinds of parts of our government. Yet we had a provision in here that 2/3 of them had to be present to make a decision. So meanwhile, we had OHA staff hounding people to try to get them to a meeting when maybe they're in a therapy session with somebody. Maybe they're out providing a service. Maybe they've got a sick kid that day, and they just can't make it to the meeting. This happens, okay? So we're saying a majority of the committee needs to be present instead of 2/3 for the Oversight and Accountability Council to make a decision. We are making sure that there are terms of office in Section 6. So right now, I think this was just an oversight in the drafting. Everybody that's on the committee turns off immediately. We have nobody that in theory stays. We have, imagine if every one of us left the legislature every single time, every two years. And we had no institutional knowledge, nobody with just a monicum of experience, okay? So we're trying to set this up so that terms rotate, so that people have four years, and that they have the ability to be reappointed, and then not everybody cycles off all at once. In Section 7, we try to make it very clear that the Oversight and Accountability Council runs the grant program, but that it is staffed by the Oregon Health Authority, that the staff at the Oregon Health Authority and the unit that is set up are the ones that administer the grant process, do the advertising, run the application, but bring the information and the process to the Oversight and Ability Council to run. There's been this ongoing debate that this measure does not fund mental health challenges, that we're only doing substance use disorder. And it is a thing in the behavioral health space to talk. And it is a thing in the behavioral health space to talk about co-occurring, right? Where you have both a substance use disorder and a mental health challenge, okay? So we are making it clear that Ballot Measure 110 is not just substance use disorder. If you show up with a substance use disorder and you're having a mental health disorder as well at the same time, you can still be served by the Behavioral Health Resource Network, okay? We didn't change anything in terms of the services that are supposed to be provided. We still have to provide a comprehensive needs assessment about your drug use and your potential alcohol disorder. There has to be individual interventions around planning and case management. There will be ongoing peer counseling and support. Assessment will be needed. There has to be harm reduction, low barrier in substance disorder, transition and supportive housing. All of those things remain in the bill. All of the services provided through the networks have to be evidence-informed, trauma-informed, culturally-specific, linguistically-responsive, person-centered, nonjudgmental. The networks have to be adequately staffed to address the needs of people with substance disorder. All of that remains. We didn't change any of that. Section eight. We put rulemaking for the Oversight and Accountability Council on the hands of the Oregon Health Authority, okay? It is the OHA that is the regular body that makes rules when we pass laws and we need more specificity, or we actually delegate, that they create rules to implement this. And instead of having the Oversight and Accountability Council run the rulemaking process, they'll be part of the rulemaking process, but that rules will be done by the Oregon Health Authority, as they do for every other program that is operated by them, okay? We've already done the audit that's in Section nine, so we are removing the reference to that audit that's dated February 1st, 2021. We are changing one of the audit dates, so that's why that's changed. Okay, I'm trying to remember what the statute does. I think I highlighted all this. This is still part of the same section, because we didn't make any changes to it. We're going to ask that training opportunities be provided to law enforcement. That's new language. We're going to ask that the audit assess the efficacy of the citation situation, and we're going to check in on this measure, what it did in terms of overdose rates.
What the citations did, or what the audit?
The whole measure.
The measure.
Yep. And finally, I think you've heard already that we will delay the audit that the Secretary of State was going to do on this by one year, because this was supposed to be a two-year program. The funding only just got out the door in December of last year, so we haven't even had a year under this. We wanted to evaluate it after two years, so we're pushing out the Secretary of State's audit by one more year to give this the full two years that we think it needs to be properly evaluated. And then you'll see Section 12, just a thing about when the amendments become operative. And then you will also see that in Section 14, we give the authority for the Oversight and Accountability Council within the resources that they get to decide if they want to do a public information campaign or not on advertising around the state hotline and the measure and the behavioral health resource networks. We did not mandate that. We thought it was appropriate for the Oversight and Accountability Council to decide amongst themselves if they thought a public information campaign was a good idea, because potentially that takes resources away from the behavioral health resource networks. They're only going to get so much money. I think it's important for them to wrestle amongst themselves about, is it better to spend money advertising about the resources, what's doing? Or is it better to not advertise it as robustly as maybe we think they should, but make sure that there's more services available for people that need them? And so that's for them to wrestle with. So those are the changes to the bill that was made. I'm prepared to try to answer as many of your questions as I can, unlike the last time, where I had experts up here who told you what they worked out. This is what I'm up here telling you what we worked out, in conjunction with a lot of different people. I just want, again, I want to emphasize this, that we all know we have things to do in this state to get behavioral health to a better place. This is one of the things that we're doing. Voters overwhelmingly passed this with 58%. It has not rolled out well. This measure is focused on trying to get it back on track, so that the next time, when the Oversight and Accountability Council does the procurement process for burns, it's sort of a boring event. We don't hear very much about it, and because of that, we think it went smoothly. And the Secretary of State's audit hopefully reveals that this thing is working as planned, even if it got off to a very rough start.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Thank you, Chair Noos, for the succinct and clear overview. I've got Representative Morgan and Deal in the queue. Javady, you're in there now. And Representative Morgan, go ahead with your question.
Thank you.
Go easy on the chair.
Or not.
No, I appreciate you bringing this forth. My staff has been attending for me.
Yes.
Because it's at the same time as my other committee. And one of the best things that I can see added is, right away in Section one, having the local planning committees to be a part of it, because in each county, they are responsible for coming up with alcohol, drug prevention, and treatment services, and a plan, and they issue grants. I have a question in to some of the team on how the committee is required to coordinate with the burns, but it doesn't say necessarily that the burns have to coordinate with the committees in following that treatment plan that they come up with. So I'm looking for clarity there. But Chair, my question would be under Section seven, and where you mentioned the grant process. Well, maybe that's just where I wrote the note. It was where you were going through the thing as I was writing notes. So the Oversight Committee is who issues the grants?
Yeah.
And is there any requirement for that Oversight Committee to connect to those local planning commissions who are coming up with the treatment and prevention needs in a community? The Oversight Council, what's their connection to making sure that the grants they issue actually coordinate with those treatment and prevention plans in a community?
I don't know that I'm prepared to give you, Vice Chairs Goodwin, Vice Chair Nelson, and Rep. Morgan, I'm not sure that I can give you a straight-up, practical answer about that. I don't know, okay? But what I believe is that each burn, ideally, when they make an application, they ought to talk about how they're coordinating with all the different entities within their county or in their region. And I think that would be part of a burn application. I think they have to demonstrate, I would suggest to them that they should demonstrate within their application that they are working with the local. And I hear what you're saying about, like, you want to sort of say that the Behavioral Health Resource Network has to be required to coordinate with the local mental health program. I'm not worried that they're going to refuse to do that. I think by us creating the dotted line where it says the local mental health authority has to check in with the burn, I believe that will happen.
I appreciate, may I follow? Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. My local burn does report to my local planning commission out of a community effort, but I do remember specifically asking prior to this session, are they required to coordinate? And the answer was, no. The burns are only required to coordinate with the other burn participants, but not with the greater prevention and treatment plan that is required of that local committee to come up with and report to the Alcohol Drug Policy Commission each time. So I'm not going to beat you over the head on this.
I don't feel beat up.
There is one other thing in the Section 14 about the advertising. Each community receives money back from alcohol and tobacco tax for prevention services.
That's right.
And the counties are responsible for prevention. Part of that prevention, and a big part of it, is that they are doing advertising, and that's a big component of prevention. Would it not be better, instead of authorizing the Oversight and Accountability Council to also be doing advertising, rather to route that through the local community prevention programs so that there's a coordinated effort where the local providers are also routing to where that help can be provided through the burns and such?
Vice Chair Goodwin, Vice Chair Nelson, and Rep. Morgan, I think that's an excellent question that you ought to lay before the Oversight and Accountability Council and ask them to wrestle with that.
Okay.
I think that's their role.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Deal.
Okay, I can ask a two-parter, but they're really connected.
All right.
Thank you. So this bill will appoint a new position and executive director that oversees, am I understanding that right?
So the idea is that there will be a director. I think we're going to change that title, executive director. That's not really a title that's used in the chain of command, Representative, but there will be a clear director for this program. That director will have responsibility to seek advice and counsel and put decision-making that's appropriate for them in front of the Oversight and Accountability Council. But meanwhile, they will also report up through the behavioral health chain of command, and then ultimately to the Director of the Oregon Health Authority.
And their responsibility is the implementation of Ballot Measure 110?
Yes.
Okay.
Someone will be in charge. And that person that's in charge will report up through the chain of command, and somebody will be asking that person, how's it going?
I like that.
Yeah, me too.
Representative Javady.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Can you help me with, maybe just summarizing again, what you see the problem is with, that's been with the rollout of Measure 110, and what we're hoping to accomplish with this oversight, shifting the oversight from OAC to OHA?
I think the easiest way I can explain it, Vice Chairs and Representative Javady, is that the ballot measure contemplated a very grassroots style of oversight, because what we wanted to do was make sure that people that provide services in this space, people that have been in recovery and have lived experience, are informing how we stand up to services and provide them, okay? It's kind of like, I think, what a lot of us understand around veterans, is that it seems that the people that are best able to provide services and support to veterans are other veterans. And so that is sort of how we wanted to establish and center this, okay? We wanted to decriminalize addiction. We want to make sure that cannabis taxes were providing for services, and we wanted to make sure that folks that had been experienced recovery, that had been in the addiction space, that had been impacted by the war of drugs, were front and center in designing the system. I think what we didn't do, though, is frankly, provide, and I'm going to use a phrase that maybe sometimes is a little negative, but it's true, is enough, frankly, bureaucracy and staff support from government to help it run, okay? We treated it, and this analogy might be a little crude, but we treated it a little bit more like the Parent Teacher Association that's running the school auction than we treated it like a government oversight body that really has responsibility for implementing a government program with a lot of money. And so I hope what we're doing is finding the sweet spot where we preserve that people who are in this space, who know about treatment, who know about what services work, are driving the program, but they are supported by people that frankly, make grant operating processes for a living, monitor whether or not things are effective, you know, know how to send out an RFP, and that is not the responsibility of the people on the Oversight and Accountability Council. They can delegate that to professional staff that have been hired and monitor how it's going or not going, and that is not their job.
Thank you.
Representative Conrad.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you very much, Chair. I, too, I have had staff attending your Thursday meetings, and I've heard good things about the work that you've been doing, and you've been, it's been difficult, so I thank you for bringing this to us for that. So my question is going to the makeup of the OAC. I'm curious if there have been any discussions about adding or changing some of those positions. Specifically, I'm looking through, and just superficially going off the titles, there's a lot of qualitative-type folks in there. I don't see a behavioral health economist. I don't see a healthcare economist. I don't see a position description for a numbers person.
Sure.
And so just a different mindset and a different makeup of that, so they get a different perspective on that.
So Vice Chairs and Representative Conrad, I'm going to just sort of riff philosophically about this for just a minute, okay? I think changing the membership of the Oversight and Accountability Council right now at this time would be a kind of a hot potato, okay? People have feelings about who should be on that committee and who should not be, who should be at the table and who should not, and who should be driving it. And I don't, I did not feel like there was a consensus from the group about additions or subtractions. What I would say, though, about your observations is, I would hope that any director of this program would consult those types and bring that consultation to the Oversight and Accountability Council and make sure that that kind of expertise was available to them to utilize.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Representative Goodwin.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So my question is along the line of Rep. Conrad. So the representation of the council really did not include local officials who would actually implement. It did not include public safety individuals. So there's a whole coordination of people in a community. They really just were not resources available in the community when this was launched. So that was the first problem. But I think the overall representation needs to be considered. And then I have concerns about, as you know, I often have concerns about OHA, so this council doesn't really seem to have any authority. It's not like they're the city council who really directs the city manager. They don't really seem to have any influence on decisions of OHA. And one more.
I don't know if I agree with that, but, okay, so I don't think I agree with that.
Maybe that will change.
I don't think it is. I think, so.
Go ahead.
Ask your third question. I'm not sure.
Your chair.
So here's what I would say, which is, we are setting up the Behavioral Health Resource Networks. That is where the resource is supposed to preside, to provide all the things that are up on that slide, okay? That's what that entity is set up for. And in the statute, it describes what sorts of services they're supposed to have available to be, to have a successful Behavioral Health Resource Network application, okay? So everybody that applied and got through is offering those things. And when it goes back out to bid at some point in 2025, the ones that are there will be evaluated based on, are they providing these things and how they did? So in terms of the membership on the body, we couldn't reach consensus about different kinds of people that should be added or excluded. And in terms of, this is going to be a little bit of a controversial statement, I think, with some of the people that are behind me, but I think it's just the opposite. I think the Oversight and Accountability Council had too much oversight over how do we design the grant? How many questions are going to be on it? How do we put out the RFP process? It was a little too much, again, to use my analogy, like the Parent Teacher Association running the school auction. I want a little less of that. I want them to be front and center on deciding which burn applications are received, did the grant process go smoothly, who did we reject and why, okay? And focused on the important decision-making, not, did we run a good RFP process? Did enough people find out about it? I mean, that is really for the professional staff to do on their behalf. They need to be, the professional staff need to be serving that up to them.
Right, and they did have, excuse me, Vice Chair, follow. They did have a $300 million, right?
Yeah.
Initially, for grant money. So they were all of a sudden in charge of a lot of money.
Yeah.
To get those out to burns that were developing, but let's say, not all there yet and ready to receive and move with that. So back to, so that amount, when you say the cap on the administration cost, are you saying as that money flows in, so let's take the $300 million as an example, 4% of that, you would say, would be administrative costs?
Correct.
That's a lot of money.
Well.
So where does that administrative, is that more FTEs with OAC? Where does that go?
That would be a question that you'd have to have someone from the Oregon Health Authority come up here and answer for you in terms of, like, how many staff they're employing to operate the unit that currently exists. But the 4% admin cap, that money is coming out, $300 million. It's not general fund. It's part of the cannabis taxes that are put in the fund.